To be clear, to come back to class. There was no proper social distancing in my classroom with that many students. And everybody was considered to be exposed. As a result, twenty percent of my class, my students could not attend a second class because they want to boost it. My students were outraged because they were so excited to be back in person and then now they were kicked out of the classroom again. All my students were informed there was that two doors are necessary to register for classes, but they had not been told about the booster. I request the district that we informed the student more clearly about the boosters, quarantine policies, so that they can keep coming back to classroom for more learning in a consistent way. Please consider reassessing the methods of communication with the faculty and student based on our feedback. I am not so much worried about my health, I'm the lucky one. But I am worried about my student learning getting disrupted because of the communication. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else in the meeting room that wishes to speak? Are there folks that are asking to speak who are joining us by Zoom conference call? Okay?
Yes, Mr. President. Just a reminder for those of you that are online in Zoom. You have three minutes to make your comment and this is for non-agenda items. Mr. President, first we have Lindsay Ayori. Lindsay Ayori.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Chancellor Claire, Student Trustee Garcia, the larger community. And thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Lindsay Ayat, pronounced A-Ya-t, like a large boat. And I'm the Academic Senate President at Skyline College. I'll provide a little context for my comment today. At the last board meeting, the special session focused on the district's decision to return to campus. There was a question about the Senate stances, so I'm here tonight to share with you some of the insights from my constituents at Skyline College. Of course, I wanted to do my due diligence and wait until after Skyline College's first academic senate meeting of the new year before speaking with you tonight. So I could hear from my constituent groups and accurately represent them to ensure that this wasn't a statement of personal bias. I'm teaching on campus this semester and I can tell you that the return to the classroom has been nerve wracking yet exciting, a lot of emotions for a lot of folks. But what has made the return for those of us who are teaching on campus a positive experience is the energy that the students bring to campus life. So thank you, students. Though some of us have returned to a physical campus in a way of teaching and learning that used to feel so familiar to all of us, right now, it's a little bit awkward. Do we fist bump? Do we, you know, rub elbows? But not just the way we're greeting each other, but the return has brought about a lot of questions and confusion. I acknowledge and truly appreciate everyone who's working around the clock to get answers to these questions. But would like to highlight two areas that are still at the forefront of the conversations at Skyline College. I know that Chancellor Claire mentioned updates regarding testing previously, but I'd like to reiterate the concern. So the first concern I bring to you tonight is both faculty and students have voiced the need for free COVID-19 testing above and beyond that reserve for exemptions, athletes, et cetera, on all three campuses. Second, I come to you with a question. In the board's decision-making timeline, where is the best place for faculty to provide feedback before final decisions are made and/or implemented? So in closing, I would like to acknowledge that we are all navigating new times. And I would like to congratulate the students who chose to continue their education, whether it was in person or virtually. And thank you to the faculty, classified professionals and administrators and community members who are working together to create an amazing student experiences across the San Mateo Community College District. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Other speakers?
Thank you for your comment, Lindsay. Forgive me for butchering your last name. Forgive me.
No worries.
Mr. President, next speaker is Kolo Wamba. Kolo Wamba.
Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Kolo Wamba and I teach physics at Skyline College. So we're now about midway through the first week, the first full week of instruction in this spring semester. And I would like to give the board an update on how my teaching and other faculty work has been going. While I'm ecstatic to be able to be here for my students, and I think my students are happy to have me, it hasn't exactly been a bowl of cherries. Already four of my STEM colleagues have had a positive COVID exposure in their class that I know of. And I have as well. Let me take a few moments to share what this experience has been like for myself and my students. According to the message I received from our COVID-19 safety officer, Ray Hernandez, the exposure in my class happened last Wednesday, which was our first day of class. However, I didn't learn about it until less than an hour before a class was to meet again the following Monday or two days ago. At this point, it would have been impossible for every student in the class to apply the isolation exposure, quarantine decision tree protocol to themselves in time. And of course, all but five of my thirty-nine students showed up right on time and ready for class that day. Since I couldn't very well try to identify which students were unboosted and ask them to leave and quarantine for five to ten days, I quickly contacted the STEM Dean, Dr. Carla Grandi, and she was able to come up with a quick solution. She found an unoccupied large lecture hall, which we would be able to, in which we would be able to keep at least six feet apart from each other. And that was where we held class that day. Fortunately for me, I'm vaccinated and boosted, so per our isolation decision tree, I am expected to symptom monitor for fourteen days and take a COVID test five days following the exposure. But otherwise, continue my teaching and work responsibilities as usual. However, as the district was still somewhat behind in ramping up onsite testing capacity for vaccinated folks like myself, I had to make do by going all the way to Stanford to get tested. And the only test I was able to obtain was one for which I won't know the result still for a couple more days. Now, the class met again this morning and I noticed that almost a third of my students were missing. I can only assume that this means that that was how many were directed to quarantine for the decision tree. This is a bad sign, as in-class discussion is a major component of my course. I can make it work, of course, but only if the whole class is in person or entirely online. This just doesn't work so well as a hybrid, which is what I have been trying to do in the meantime. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Tadashi Souchida. Tadashi Souchida.
Hi, thank you very much. I've been a, I've been a full-time math instructor at Skyline College for over twenty years. I've always been very much a cheerleader for my college and for my district. I fell in love with Skyline when I was a graduate student and working part-time and it was my dream to be able to stay at Skyline. However, this really is the first time when I feel that I need to speak out. I would like to bring another perspective and it's one that is not only coming from myself, but so many faculty that I speak to. So for myself, my own situation, I take care of my elderly father and also my mother-in-law. I was okay with returning to campus before Omicron. By the way, the AFT survey shows that a large percentage of workers care for elderly or children and, but for me, the Omicron tidal wave changed everything. I was absolutely stunned that the decision was made not to delay the start of face-to-face classes for a couple of weeks to try to keep ourselves, our students, our families and our students' families safe. Especially bad when on-campus testing has been extremely limited and I'm very glad to hear that that's being remedied. I have friends working at high schools who've had much better access to testing. I'm not, I understand that the district is in a bind, but I truly don't think that what we've been doing is the answer. I don't think staying the course has been, well, it's been costing us in many ways. One, student stress. Yes, it's wonderful to be back with students and some students are very excited to be back and that's great. But many of them aren't. I felt the only fair thing that I could do was to turn my classes into flex classes so that students who were not comfortable could work remotely, so that students with COVID, and yes, I've got a number of them, can work remotely and not fall behind. So given the choice, I found that fifty percent or about fifty percent of my students are far more comfortable. They've thanked me for having that choice and have been staying remote. So it's certainly not universal. There's been a lot of students, there's been a lot of student stress, individual conversations with students almost in tears over this. Worker morale is lower than I've seen in twenty years. We're all still fiercely loyal to our students, but frankly, many of us are disillusioned with the district. Many of the longtime faculty really feel they no longer recognize the institution they've dedicated so much of their lives to. And it's even worse for staff who are working at a desk and have to meet students in a small office. So I see I'm out of time. Once again, I'll reiterate, I completely understand the district is in a bind. I've been a cheerleader for the district for over twenty years, but I do not feel we're going the right way. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Manisha Singh. Manisha Singh.
Hi, everyone. My name is Manisha Singh and I am a Skyline student who is attending in-person classes. I'm here today to speak about the lack of safety precautions at Skyline and the risks that not only the students, but our faculty are being pushed into. I stand with our teachers and professors who are speaking here today to ask the district for more meaningful safety measures to be put into place as soon as possible. How are we meant to put our focus on education if we are fearful and stressed out about contracting this potentially deadly virus? How are teachers meant to teach us to the best of their abilities if they are constantly put at risk? In my experience on campus thus far, it's been about a week, I have come to learn that there are KN95 masks available in certain locations only because one out of five of my professors had shared this information. I only see a handful of students on campus who wear KN95s. If only one of my professors told me that the school was offering it, how many other professors do you think show this information with their students? It is the responsibility of the district to help the students and faculty by educating them on these available resources and the extremely necessary safety precautions. Not just by putting up a bunch of signs that say to wash your hands and wear masks. Respectfully, it's been about two years in this pandemic. We are more than aware of those abundant precautions, however. Those signs are not nearly enough. It's vital to also provide extra safety measures such as COVID testing for everyone, not only unvaccinated. Especially because of the surge and the scarcity of COVID testing. These demands are the bare minimum. Our faculty needs to be heard. Our students, especially those who are immensely, who feel immensely unsafe, need to be heard. And we have a right to want safeguards on campus so that we feel safe to come back to campus. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker is Ismail Naim. Ismail Naim.
Hello. I'm Ismail Naim and I'm a high school senior from Skyline Middle College. And I'm reading a statement on behalf of Elliot Cruz, who was not able to attend this board meeting. So, good evening, board members. I address you today as a full-time worker, a wife, mother of three and a proud student of our SMCCD community. In the past two years, we have all been faced with tremendous challenges, but now I know I've met these challenges with resilience and perseverance so that someday, someday I will have the education to provide my family with better opportunities. However, this semester has added more challenges. While the last two years we have had the flexibility for online learning, this semester did not allow that. You see, yesterday I made the decision to not attend class because two of my kids tested positive for COVID over the weekend. While the testing notification and self-study have been a complete hurdle, my main focus is to keep my family and community healthy. We are currently isolating at home in an effort to minimize spread and really, I want to set the example for my children and what it means to take care of your community. I could have easily disregarded the well-being of my teacher and classmates, but that wouldn't be right. However, by not attending class, I have now missed a class and more importantly, I missed out on the information and knowledge provided at this class. I feel like I am now at a disadvantage because I have to catch up. And while it's only one class, I'm concerned about the negative impact this will have on my learning for the rest of the semester. I can go on and on with the challenges I've experienced in the last two years, but what I want you to take from this is the success I've experienced was due to the flexibility of the online classes and teachers. I respectfully ask you to reconsider moving back to the online format while we navigate through these challenges. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And just a reminder to everyone that is in Zoom, when I'm transferring you over to a panelist, please stay there. If you decline me transferring you to a panelist, then you won't be able to be heard. So if I do transfer you, make sure you stay there. The next speaker is Emily Heine. Emily Heine.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm Dr. Emily Heine. She/her, physics faculty at Skyline College in lead of the physics department. I'd like to start off by thanking all of my colleagues for their hard work and support for the last couple of years. I really needed you and so did our students. And I see you and I really appreciate you. A lot of us have been really looking forward to our full return to campus as it was supposed to bring this community together and we have missed being in the classroom with our students so very much. However, enrollment in my department and beyond is the lowest it has been in the last two years. We followed the plan and scheduled the majority of our classes face-to-face. Our department, which managed to maintain its growth throughout the pandemic, had to cancel several sections for the very first time. Students contacting, contact us, asking about our classes, only to tell us they found the same class online somewhere else. One of my classes had under ten students for a long time, watching closely throughout December. This is very far from its usual thirty-five to forty students. So we contacted students to ask about moving it online. The majority of students responded. And they were very relieved to say, yes, please move it online. The class now has twenty students, which happened to report, which is still not what we were hoping, but the classroom has now become a source of anxiety for faculty and students alike. Faculty are struggling to accommodate students who are sick with COVID at home or having to quarantine without the technology adapted for that. This is especially a big challenge for our lab courses. Most of our courses in the department, I don't know about the rest of the, you know, the college, I've had at least one positive case. Some of our colleagues and students can't afford to bring COVID home to very high-risk, high-risk family members. To them, there is just no such thing as a mild case of COVID. After two years of working so hard under extremely difficult circumstances, this is the first time I'm hearing colleagues say they want to change careers because they're so worn out and they don't feel valued and respected. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker we have is Kat. Kat?
Hello. Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kat Store. I'm a social justice major at Skyline. I'm also an SI and an English peer tutor and I lived in San Mateo my whole life. I'm speaking today as a student who stands in solidarity with those who are advocating for safer conditions on campus as we experience a dangerous surge in COVID cases. I'd just like to start by thanking all the wonderful faculty I've had these past two years. It's been completely online, but they've made learning here an absolute joy to be a part of. And I've always felt a part of the Skyline community and I'm so grateful for that. I'd like to address a concern of mine. The mentality that we are all going to be exposed at some point here at our school leaves behind students. It leaves behind disabled and immunocompromised students, students who have family members at home who are at risk for COVID and students like me who are simply scared of getting sick with a still new and still unknown virus. It also threatens the very core ideals of equity and access I know this community wants to uphold because being safe at our school is our right and should not be a matter of privilege of any kind. I know that we are all excited to get back to learning in person and all the connection that it entails. But if we leave behind students and faculty in that process, then we are not doing our job as a community, especially during this dangerous surge that is happening right now. I know that at this point in the pandemic, it is a reality that everyone has a different level of personal risk they are taking as an individual and that is inevitable. But as someone who has felt continually let down by our institutions as a whole, that have been willing to expose the people they are supposed to serve to an unacceptable amount of risk, I ask that as a school, especially in the context of the surge we are in, we hold ourselves accountable to the highest possible standards of safety and care for our community, which is not what I have seen happen so far in this process of returning to campus. I appreciate that these demands on testing en masse are moving forward, but I would like to emphasize that as we get this infrastructure up, we continue to emphasize transparency and communication so that as students, we are better aware of why and how decisions that will affect our health on campus are being made. Throughout this return to in-person learning, I felt completely confused and fearful of this return as I was enrolling in classes because I did not know what information this was based on, what protocols would be used, or if these in-person classes would last throughout the winter. And so I ended up enrolling in online-only classes. I know these challenging circumstances have required leadership to balance many differing needs and to make decisions under complex pressures. But it does not justify the way that student and faculty needs have not been listened to. As a student, I have no interest in attending classes in person if my faculty and staff and my fellow students do not feel safe. I would encourage you to listen to students and faculty, restore some of our faith, trust in this institution we are all a part of and deeply cherish. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker we have Alicia Palamsky. Alicia Palamsky.
I'm Alicia. I'm a physics and astronomy professor at CSM. And I just want to give you some additional insight as to what the past two weeks have been like. If the mandate to stay face-to-face was supposed to go smoothly and preserve student learning, exactly the opposite has been going on. I have had COVID-positive students in every single one of my face-to-face classes. They have not been able to attend class. There has been no alternatives for them. We are completely unprepared to help them. There's no high-flex rooms available in most cases. And last minute learning high-flex the night before a class is about to occur does not work, obviously. I have two classes in which all of the students requested to go online and I was denied. I asked on their behalf. Two of them were COVID-positive, so they have not yet attended class. There's been huge confusion over the booster issue that Rika mentioned. It should have been that when students registered for class, they were informed that if they didn't have a booster, they were going to have to quarantine when they were exposed. There are students, there were students today in my classes that have been exposed. And because of that exposure, fortunately had been boosted, so stayed in the class, but they have tested and they don't know the results of their tests yet. They were exposed to someone close to them, so they could easily end up being positive. And here we are doing labs together, sharing equipment. There's no social distancing at all. This is dangerous. This situation is disturbing, distressing. There's students missing out on learning opportunities because of this. And frankly, I'm exhausted. I'm fielding emails from students every single day about being exposed or being COVID-positive and trying to help them as best I can. But in some cases, it's impossible. There are no alternatives for them. There are students that are dropping courses completely. There are students that don't have any alternative because there are no face-to-face versions of their classes. So they're stuck. It's a really horrible situation and it's bad for everyone. If we had started online for a couple of weeks, there wouldn't be this complete chaos that's going on. I've had days that I've been dealing with this when I haven't even had time to eat anything all day long. That was yesterday, by the way. So that's all I have to say. I'm just exhausted at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Cynthia Erickson. Cynthia Erickson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Erickson. I'm an adjunct faculty at the College of San Mateo. And I've met several of our board members and other dignitaries in my eleven years on campus. I know that Chancellor Claire and Dr. Mendoza have worked very hard in a lot of the programs we've set forth, but my concern is the day-to-day minutia that keeps the college running and I'd like to make you aware that I think the staff is very, very stressed, the support staff, in not delivering some of the fundamentals. Two examples I'll give you. First of all, I was honored to be part of Flex Day and to teach to the whole community how important it is to be engaged with our students. So I'm a cheerleader for CSM. I got to campus, I went into my classroom and what I discovered was all the overhead projectors had been changed and I didn't have the equipment to hook up my PowerPoints. That remedy wasn't available to me because the IT folks don't work at night. Number two, we had copiers broken in all the different buildings and I couldn't get copies made. So is the support staff so stressed that we're not covering the basics? That's point number one. The other item I'd like to say is the workload is huge. The reporting for COVID is messy and Ray Hernandez has reports he needs. It's very, very time-consuming. Students take a lot of time coaching and walking them through this. And I'm not sure the board is aware how draining that is on the faculty. We also have safety training that's mandatory through the HR department. David Foo has a couple of programs that have to be done by January thirty-first. And then last but not least, I was involved in an orientation this week for performance reviews. So when we're working with all the COVID issues, we can't get our tools to get our job done, we're going to have a performance review set up in the next ten weeks. I don't think that's a realistic way to assess faculty while they're under this much pressure. So I'd like you to look behind the scenes at some of the key elements we need to keep the colleges running beyond the important COVID things that we're already dealing with. Thank you very much for your time. I wish us all well, but let's do some more to support the faculty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Laurie Slickton. Laurie Slickton is the next speaker.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all my colleagues and students who spoke beautifully before me and I hope I do it justice. I wanted to say, you know, COVID is probably endemic, it's going to be with us, but all variants are not equal. And we have to respond in kind to everything that comes our way. The good news is, is that the faculty and my classified colleagues and other staff have worked beautifully and strenuously to do the heavy lifting to pivot this whole district and lift this district up to serve our students. So we are capable of responding as needed. And it is stunning to me as well that we've decided to stay the course under the circumstances. COVID, excuse me, public health requires a sound response, a sound policy and it requires a collective effort. And we still have a responsibility to stop the spread, to avoid these mutations and variants. We have returned to campus to listen to messages from administrators at the top highest level, all the way down to the dean division meetings, where we're being told COVID infection is not an if, it's a when. It's supposedly a safe return, but get ready to be sick, basically. That we are told that we're going to have anxiety. That was a word used in a meeting when we returned to campus. That we need to create a sub-list. I've worked in the district for twenty-nine years, full-time anthropologist. Love my school, love it. Never have I been, welcome back to, on a safe return, get ready to be sick. Have somebody ready to take over your class. It's as though our administrators know that we are going into an unsafe or risky environment. It's as though our administrators know that we are going into an unsafe or risky environment. We often, many of us live in multi-generational households, have people who are immune compromised. Or like my husband, who with three documents from a doctor could not get reasonable accommodations last fall through HR and the dean to work remotely and was forced to resign and retire. And he's not alone. He's not alone. He's tired. It's been devastating for our family to see him end a long, proud career Cal graduate in this manner, completely unnecessary.
Thirty seconds.
This morning, I asked my students, if you had COVID symptoms, do you know where to get a test? No. If you needed a mask, do you know where you can get one on campus? No. If you had COVID, do you know who to report to? No. Our messaging isn't getting through. Not a single person knew what to do. We need testing, we need contact tracing, which we don't have adequate amounts of in a prompt manner. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. President, we have two more speakers.
Okay, thank you. And again, if you do want to speak, you need to use the raise your hand function, which is in your Zoom control.
Next speaker is Jose Milan. Jose Milan.
Good evening, members of the board, chancellor community. My name is Jose Milan, and I work at Skyline College. I'm currently serving as a retention specialist for guardian scholars population. I wanted to share that as a classified professional, I came back to offer in-person services last summer 2020. In doing so, I saw the need to provide such services to our most vulnerable and underserved students, current and former foster youth, English as a second language students, EAC or DRC students, among others. As providers, my team and I met, we brainstormed, thought outside the box in order to support our students as safely as we could possibly do. Fast forwarding, school officially started last week, and as I prepared myself to welcome my students, once again, I was faced with the news that I was exposed to COVID, to later find out that I have it. My symptoms, unlike what others might mention, were not mild. Rather, they were severe enough to the point that I haven't fully recovered and I haven't returned to provide in-person services. I have missed the opportunity to be at school for my students. I brought the virus at home. I infected my five-year-old, who is autistic. I didn't have the luxury to isolate myself since I live in an intergenerational household. Our daily structure abruptly changed. My son had to stop his therapies and school. One thing that I wanted to mention too, that I'm a product of the SMCCV, and I'm grateful for the academic guidance as well as employment opportunities provided to me. In a similar manner, I encouraged my wife to begin her journey at the SMCCV, and she's now on her fourth semester as an ESL student at Canyara College. She was exposed by me unfortunately and developed symptoms as well. She missed her first week of school and became overly anxious. Navigating the protocols and guidelines established was overwhelming for her. I guided through every step, but I couldn't ignore how overwhelming this might be for their students that don't have a retention specialist working in the family. Lastly, until December, I was happy to say that our numbers remained the same throughout the pandemic, but that's no longer the case. Our program saw a decline of enrollment of students this semester. And when I contacted several of my students to try to bring them back, many of them reported that they decided to leave our, to leave our campus due to their inability to find online courses. Instead, they enroll in other courses outside of the district since they were fearful and concerned to return on campus. I hope that we can continue to offer a robust academic modality that is responsive and catered to the most needs of our students. As board trustees, we do trust that you will make the decisions that will keep everyone safe during this Omri concert. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Jonathan Mariano Smith.
Can you hear me? Are we good?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Jonathan Marano Smith. I'm a member of AS, or the Student Council at Skyline College, but today I'm not speaking to you as a member of the Student Council nor as a student. I'm speaking to you as a human being who's concerned about the health and safety of others before my own. I personally agree with the demands made by AFT and other people that have spoken today, and I feel like, what's the alternative? We do nothing? We give up? We pretend like it's not happening? We settle for what we're currently doing? Fact is, none of these will get us to where we want to go. We need to take action and do what is necessary right now for those that we care about, including everyone here at SMCCD. Starting with the demands made by AFT. We must go above and beyond to help others, not for personal gain, recognition, or an upcoming election. You just do it because that's the right thing to do. It's the right action to take. That's what leaders do, in my personal opinion. Now ask yourself, is this what you're doing? If not, why are you here? Just think about that. The actions of yesterday do not outweigh the actions of the present. You will be judged by the actions you take right now by all who must follow your directives. At this point, I'd like to use the rest of my time as a moment of silence for the 5.6 million people we have lost to COVID worldwide and for the very real possibility of laying a classmate, faculty, or family member to rest due to inaction.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Excuse me, I'm not done yet. I'd like to have this moment of silence for those, the 5.6 million people we've lost, and for the speaker before me who has serious symptoms. Let's honor and respect them with a moment of silence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have three minutes to speak, and you have one minute left if you'd like to use it. Next speaker.
Thank you for your comment.
So I'm not going to be able to have the full minute of a moment of silence.
Who's our next speaker, please?
Thank you.
The next speaker is Nancy. And she is our last speaker.
Good evening. Is my time started or?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I have been before the board before with some comments about COVID. My son is a high school student, and he attends, this is his sixth semester at Canyada, and he's utilizing the other campuses online since he's not coming in person. I guess I'm just, I'm really exhausted, as a lot of people have spoken about. It just seems like the processes are not in order. And what I mean by that is my son as a student is receiving emails from a COVID-19 health officer is the title now of this professor. And it's very detailed, but the contact phone number has been incorrect. And I've been trying to get in touch with him. My son is a minor. He's sixteen. And have not been able to get in touch. The number is out of order. I did reply to his email, and he replied back with a another alternate number that I could reach, and he said that his number was mistyped at the bottom of his letterhead. Well, I received another email from him today, and the phone number is still incorrect. And so I would just think that somebody in that position would be, you know, paying special attention to that. I had a lengthy phone call with him today. Well, it wasn't really lengthy, but he didn't really want to hear too much what I had to say. But I do research because when I want to come and speak to you, I feel like I need to have some facts. This is from UCLA. It's on their website. Anybody can access it. And it says they are returning to instruct in-person instruction on January thirty-first. Mandatory testing. All students, faculty, and staff living, learning, or working on campus are required to test once a week and are encouraged to test twice weekly. So everybody's getting tested. Doesn't matter whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, purple, yellow, green, whatever. This is a letter dated January twenty-first, last Friday. And it goes in and it tells all these details about where to get their test on campus. They've got vending machines, all this kind of available. Then it talks about how how often the regular weekly testing. So I don't understand why our community here is going back and forth and having all these faculty. So and also, look at the regulations if you want. Board of trustees, please look at this, what you are requiring for people that are having to get tested and file all this personal information. It is ridiculous. I can forward this to you if you would like, but you need to click on the links that they sent to us for my son at sixteen to have to report all this. It is ridiculous. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else seeking recognition?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your remarks. We are now moving to item new business, and the first item is twenty